Call the meeting to order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
You're here.
Vice Mayor Walter.
Here.
Councilmember Woolridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Montano is absent. Councilmember Gillen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We need a motion please.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn to executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We will be in executive session for probably forty-five minutes to an hour. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second to adjourn from executive session. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, now is the time for the invocation. Tonight, I'm going to ask everybody to stand. In your prayer, I'd ask each individual to pray to whatever God they like. Keeping in mind, the public servants that are serving at your pleasure. Keeping in mind our armed services overseas. And also keeping in mind tonight, and for quite a while farther, a young girl from here in Florence, fourteen years old. Has just been diagnosed leukemia. Georgie Vickery is a long-distance runner for the high school long-distance team. She's come down with a bad case of leukemia. She will be in the hospital the next six months, going through treatment. She starts her chemotherapy tomorrow. So if we'd all keep Georgie in mind, she's got a lot of friends here. She lived here in town during our prayer this evening. If you'd keep Georgie in mind, I'd appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the first call to the public for public comment on issues within a jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take any action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. At this time, I have one request to speak, and that's Mary Battle. You sure can. Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to speak? Saying no motion, no action, I'll close the call to the public?
Item, item, sorry, I apologize. Item eight, presentations. A acceptance of two awards from the Arizona chapter of the American Planning Association for the 2014 Distinguished Historic Landmark Award, and the 2014 Best Ordinance Regulation Award. Mr. Ekov, I think.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy New Year. We recently, the town of Florence, won these awards at the Arizona Planning Association Annual Conference. And we were happy to receive them, but we're even happier to bring them forward to you, Mayor and Council, and to let the town receive these awards on our behalf and on behalf of the consultants that we worked with. This is a competitive process, the award cycle that we go through. And you can see that the committee that judges these, it's private and public planners from across the state of Arizona, distinguished group of planners that have been in the business for twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty years or so. This year, we were very privileged to win an award under the Best Ordinance Regulation Legislation Policy category for the Florence Territory District, Florence Territory Square Zoning District. And as you know, on that, on that project, you know, over time, we acquired several parcels, and we worked with the private property owners adjacent to us to come up with this assemblage of land that we initially master-planned as part of the North End Framework Vision Plan. Went and developed the, we did a general plan update. We did a Territory Square Zoning District, which was, we were recognized for doing this because it's not your run-of-the-mill zoning district. It was a very creative, kind of out-of-the-box zoning district that we came up with. That really kind of minimized a lot of the traditional regulatory components and focused more on the character and the objectives, the form of what we wanted to create with the, with the project. Conveyed that with a lot of great graphics throughout the document. We did this in conjunction with Swaback Partners. And of course, you know, that tool has worked well for developing this, this particular project. And of course, we've been working with Harold and Katie Crist at the Windmill, using this mechanism as well. And we can see this progression here of buying the land and getting to the point where we had a groundbreaking on the project. So it was really an honor and a privilege to be, to be recognized for that effort, and we appreciate, you know, the partnership that we had with Swaback Partners on that. And Mayor and Council, of course, with both of these. We could have, never have done any of this stuff or gotten these awards without the Mayor and Council being supportive and the management, the management team being supportive of us doing things like this. So we have these two beautiful awards, and very, very fragile, but we have some in dis, we already have one previous award, so you probably see there's some similarity. But we'll have these on display in our, in our new office, which we hope to be opening on the twentieth. It's, it's looking beautiful. And then the second award tonight, I really have to give a lot of credit again for, for you guys, for Mayor and Council, for letting us take on this project. Because I know it was a little tough to make the decision about spending additional money on the Brunen Camp Bakery, Bakery building, when we got to that point again where we said, wow, it looks like it's another $250,000, $300,000 in this building, and it wasn't that long ago before we did the previous renovation. But you know what? It was well worth it, because at the same time, we're looking ahead, we're planning forward with projects like Territory Square. We're always working to preserve the past and recognize the beautiful history that we have here. On this particular project, I want to show you some, some slides, because it's, it's kind of easy to forget exactly the condition that the building was in before we did the renovation. But we had walls that were kind of leaning, leaning out and bowing, and cracks all over the place in the brick. When we got down to the foundation, we had deterioration in the, in the old stone foundation walls. They had to use the hydraulic jacks and the plates under the foundation. There was an amazing amount of work that was going in, occurring in this building. It took some time, but we've, we had a look at the building with some scaffolding for a while. But just in the last few days, we finished the very, the icing on the cake with the new awnings that are put on, put on the building. And on this particular project, we really have to give a lot of credit to Wayne Costa and also Mario and over in Public Works, and Swan Architects. Because this was really, you know, it's far easier to build a brand-new building than it is to do all the work that they had to do on this, on this building. And they did an amazing job from a technical aspect, and that was appreciated again and recognized by winning this award. So Mayor and Council, we want to present these awards to you and to the council, and thank you for, for all your support for, for getting these things done.
You know, these awards are really special as far as the planning. It's hard to win one, but when you win two in a year, I think that's even more. And I think a lot of that has to do with the Director of our Planning and Development Department. Mark, if you've listened to his presentation tonight, never said aye, never said anything like that. But with the direction of Mark has taken us in with our planning department, we're receiving these rewards. They're well-deserved. You and your staff have done a great job in bringing the town up. We see people more coming into town nowadays, taking a look at us because of your nice office, what you guys have done. And these two awards just kind of, to me, put icing on the cake. And I think you're doing a great job in there, Mark. I know sometimes a little bit rough, but this makes it worth it.
Yes, sir.
And again, thank you very much, Mark, for the job you guys done.
Thank you.
Item nine, consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A, authorization to enter into a professional service agreement with Baxter Design Group, LLC. Item B, authorization to enter into a professional service agreement with Lee Engineering, LLC. Item C, authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Pinal County for election and recorder services to conduct a May 19, 2015, special mail ballot election. Item D, authorization to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Florence and the Town of Superior for the purposes of providing fire department dispatching services for the Superior Fire Department to include ambulance service. Item E, resolution number 1491-15, approval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona renaming West Spirit Way, Florence, Arizona to Spirit, to West Spirit Loop, Florence, Arizona. Item F, recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on Florence's Gardens Mobile Home Association's application for special event liquor license for their annual style show, annual fundraiser on March 17, 2015. Recommendation, item G, recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control on the Greater Florence Chamber Commerce's application for a special event liquor license for their first Thursday mixer on February 5, 2015. Item H, approval of accepting the register of demands ending November 30, 2014, in the amount of $2,449,658.38. Mayor, members of council, that is your consent agenda.
Does any member of the council like to have anything taken off the consent agenda?
Yes. I'd like to have item B and item H taken off.
Item, what?
B.
B as in boy?
And boy, and H.
And H?
Yes. Questions on those?
Any other? Any member of the audience have anything they'd like to take off of the consent agenda? I would like to take off item D for clarification, is all. With item B, D, and H taken off, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item B, D, and H.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the object, with omitting items B, D, and H. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion B, item B.
My question on item B is, we are doing a engineering study on two different traffic lights out on Hunt, one at the Fire Hall and one at Addaway. My question is, why are we paying to have a, an engineer tell us that we need those traffic lights there when we all know that we need them there? You know, that's, we're paying $30,000 for something that we know that we need.
I don't think it's only the need of it. I think it may be a location issue and stuff like that that will develop. But John, can you answer that?
I'll certainly take the staff at it, Mayor, members of the council. First of all, the purpose of this, of this item is to set in place a professional service agreement to capture work that, in this particular case, Lee Engineering has been performing for the Town of Florence. And I have Mr. Bruegerman here, Dave, with us that can answer the specifics as to the genesis of those two projects. It was before my time. Again, the purpose of this item is to capture their work so that we can track it from beginning to end. And, but Dave would come forward, he can explain those two traffic signals in more, more detail for you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. The issue at the fire station is not a study, it's to complete the plans for the installation of the signal that we know already needs to go in. The project was initiated probably about a year and a half ago, when the vision of the fire station was first started. And at one point, they accelerated the construction of the fire station, and the signal was left to be constructed a little bit later. So I'm just finishing the plans for that, is all that item is. The other item, which is Hunt and Addaway Highway, Addaway Road, is a safety study that we've been asked to perform. Although it's common to think that the easy answer is a traffic signal, there's also federal requirements that have to be met to document the need for a signal. So we perform various numerical analysis to determine if it meets any of the nine established warrants by the FHWA to install a signal, as well as other safety aspects, including the amount of curvature at the kink there, and other safety aspects that might come into play.
Thank you.
Under item D, thank you, sir.
Do you want to make a motion to approve that?
Can't we do it all as three? Okay, we need a motion on item B?
I move that we approve item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item B under the consent agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. My question on item D, is this with the Town of Superior, or is the Superior Fire Department a district?
It's with the Town of Superior. The Town of Superior contacted our police department and let us know that they were going to do fire, they were going to do police dispatching through Pinal County. So they needed someone to do fire dispatching. They met with our police chief, and they worked out a system to where it would work. And we entered into a contract with our attorney's approval to make sure that we would be indemnified.
I'm just curious, over the town or district?
Yeah, they are a town.
Okay. And they do respond outside their city limits?
Chief Hughes, do you know if they respond outside their city limits?
We have Mark Pryor here from the Town of Superior, and he can answer that question.
Okay.
Yes, we do. Our CON is actually seventy square miles, all the way to Gonzalez Pass and to Oak Flat.
You taking the mine, the new mine up there?
Yes, for CON, for ambulance service.
Okay. That's all, that was my question. I understood it used to be, they used to call it Superior Fire District, and that's why I wondered.
That was merged into the town in ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll make a motion, we pass D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item D under the consent agenda. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by aye. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, John?
Yes. In the budget on, I guess it's item nine, six, six, seven, zero, on eleven, four, there was a payment to Hayden Building for the Padilla Park, restock of the sodium by sulfate for $19,000. What's, what's that got to do with the park?
What page are you on?
I don't, they aren't numbered, but it was November 4th, and it was item number nine, six, six, seven, zero. Did I read that wrong?
Oh. Mr. Anderson, are you referring to the 1022 Padilla Park, that Silver King Plaza, restock of sodium by sulfate?
Yes.
Mark, do you know offhand what that's for exactly? We can get that answer back to you, sir. I don't know offhand. There was a lot of line item detail on that, but we will get that information to you.
What's, what's that, what's that chemical used for in a park? Anybody know?
Mayor, members of the council, I would be surprised if it's used at the park. We use it at our wastewater treatment facilities, at, it's dealing with our chlorine residual. So it's part of the treatment train at our plant. I'm thinking maybe-
Council, this always comes up a little louder over here. Councilmember Anderson, Mayor's Council. What you're actually reading is actually for the line below at Hill Brothers Chemical Company, and it is for the Southwest, or Southwest Water Treatment Plant.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I move we approve item B.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item D of the consent agenda. Any other discussion?
It's item H.
What?
Item H.
H, excuse me. I meant it, it's item H.
The original motion was to approve item B. Mr. Anderson has changed it to be item H, the warrant register.
Well, I thought we approved item B under him.
Yeah. His original motion was to approve item H.
So, item H.
So we are now approving item H, the warrant register.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second on the floor.
Need a motion to approve item H?
We have a motion and a second.
Okay, then we need a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item ten, new business. Item A, a resolution number 1492-15, discussion approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, ordering and calling a special election to be held on May 19, 2015, in and for the Town of Florence, Arizona, to submit to the qualified electors of the Town of Florence, the question, shall the Town of Florence regain local control and exceed the state-imposed expenditure limitation for fiscal year 2015-16 by $15 million to allow the Town to adopt a budget no greater than the amount that was adopted for fiscal year 2014-2015? Mayor, members of council, at the December 15, 2014 meeting, we did go through the legal requirements, and we did go into a special session, and we did vote for the ability to send this question to the ballot. This just officially calls that election. And in calling that election, what it does is it sets out the designated date of the election. The designated date of the election is May 19, 2015. It also sets out the fact that the town clerk is authorized to conduct this election and spend all costs necessary to conduct the election. It designates the purpose, for the ballot language, the purpose and the ballot language for the question. It says basically that the following shall be the official ballot language for the election here and after referred to as the official ballot. And then it's the same exact question that is in the title, except for it has, "A yes vote shall have the effect of continuing existing services by regaining local control of existing revenues of the, for the town residents." And then it says, "A no vote shall have the effect of preventing the local control of expenditures by Florence residents, and will require expenditures, and will require expenditures instead to be limited by the state-imposed expenditure formula based on the fiscal year 1979-1980 expenditures, resulting in cuts of existing town services and program." The resolution also designates the deadline for voter registration, and that will be April 20, 2015. As council knows, we currently have the lawsuit on whether or not the annexations will in fact be incorporated or not incorporated. If that decision is not made by this date, then the people that are outside our area will not be able to vote in this election.
Any other questions, Felisa? Need a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 1492-15.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 1492-15. Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Item B, discussion approval, disapproval of board and commission appointments to the authorization for staff to continue to accept applications until all seats are filled. Item I, appointment, or item one, appointment of Tom Selay and Ann Rankin to the Arts and Culture Commission with a term to expire December 31, 2017, assigning Tom Selay as the chair for a one-year period, as per code. Item two, appointment of Kathy Adams, Debbie Novetti, and Michael Fitzgerald to the Historic District Advisory Commission with terms to expire December 31, 2017. Item three, appointment of Alfred Selaya, Louis Henry Padilla, and Peter Villaverti to the Industrial Development Authority with terms to expire December 31, 2020. Item four, appointment of Sherry Berger, Eugene Haran, and Thelma Harmon to the Joint Library Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2016. Appointment of Trudy Kelm as alternate to the Joint Youth Library Advisory Board with a term to expire December 31, 2016. Item five, appointment of Sean Gibson and Robert Smith to the Parks and Recreation Board with a term to expire December 31, 2017. Item six, appointment of Billy Joe Garcia and Bruce Finstermaker to the Planning and Zoning Commission with the term to expire December 31, 2017. Mayor and members of council, as you know, the clerk's office has started accepting applications for these positions in October of 2014. Mayor came to visit me at the end of last week, December 29. We sat down with all of the applications, and we only had enough applications, giving almost everyone their first choice for appointment, to fill the boards and commissions. The mayor felt it was best to bring these appointments to the council at this time versus having interviews done when we couldn't fill all of the positions. His appointments are a recommendation, and he would defer to you if you'd like to make some other type of recommendation. The other thing is, is that every person on a Town of Florence Board and Commission, only at this time serves on one individual board and commission, and not multiple. There are people who have requested the ability to serve on multiple boards and commissions at one time. The council, to date, has not done that. So with that, if you have any questions, or if you'd like the mayor to speak, I'll turn it over to you.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointments of the board and commission, and to authorize staff to continue to accept applications until all seats are filled.
I had a question, if, I had a question if we- Let's get a, let's get a second on it, and then we'll go into discussion. Second, okay, Bill.
Yeah, on the Industrial Development Authority, my understanding is there's four openings on there.
There is four openings. We had three applications where they selected the IDA as first choice. We had one application which they selected another board and commission as first choice. So that means that we are filling the three seats, and one seat is remaining open.
Okay, there's, there's four seats total.
There's four seats total, but you're only filling three seats at this time.
How do they break a tie?
Well, there's more people. If you look back in your packet, there is more people than just the three that we are appointing. But, and if, until we get an application, I don't have anyone to suggest to you to appoint.
Oh, okay, well, the way I, I misunderstood. I thought there was four other openings besides these three that were not filled.
Oh, no, sir.
Oh, okay.
There were four openings total.
Oh.
Four, four members had expiring terms. Three members decided to renew their applications by this meeting. We still have one term that has not been filled.
Okay, and this is, this is probably the longest terms of all the committees, am I right?
This term is set by statute, not by the Town of Florence.
Right, it's five years, it's till 2020.
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to point that out, yeah. Okay, that's, you answered my question.
Any other discussion?
No.
I'll call for the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Second call to the public, same rules as the first call. Mary, you're up.
What about the item 11?
Oh, excuse me, Mary, sit down. You're going to get up here in a minute, hon. Item 11, department reports. Does any member of the council have any questions of the department heads that are here with us tonight? Hearing none, I'll close, call the department reports. Okay, Mary, your turn. And John, if you say anything, Mary's going to get you, not me.
I know better.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Town Council members. My name is Mary Battle. It's 6102-
My name is Mary Battle, at 6102 West Montebello Way in Florence, Arizona. I would like to tell you about the Florence Women's Club. They're located at 231 North Willow Street, and they will be having their annual fashion show luncheon on Saturday, January 17, 2015. The doors will open at 11:15. The tax deductible amount of $15 goes towards the Florence High School and the Poston Butte Scholarships, which is wonderful. The tickets are available at the Florence Visitor Center at the corner of Main and Runcles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary. Mary, you've got something else going on tomorrow night, right?
There is, the Mosaic Church is going to have a free concert tomorrow evening at 6:30 at the Women's Club, and it's free to the public. You're welcome.
Does any other member of the audience have anything for public comment? Hearing none, I close the call to the public. Call the council, John?
Nothing.
Becky?
Nothing.
Yep.
Well, I'd just like to compliment the Community Development Department. Mark and his crew had a little, not a problem, but it could have been, but anyway, a person bought a couple of homes, and the staff came up with, used some of the infill improvement rules and, and came up with a creative solution to the problems. I just wanted to let, let them know that, that they did a good job, and it was appreciated, and I think we're on the right direction with the, working to get some of this infill taken care of. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I do have one comment, I forgot.
Not your turn yet.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank those people who volunteered to serve on boards and commissions, your time and energy is very much appreciated, and thank you very much.
Okay, John, now you.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment about an article that was in the AAA magazine this last month. They recognized Mount Althaus Restaurant here in town, a nice article about Pete and his, his restaurant there. We need more ads like that.
Granted. Thank you, John.
Sure. Just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, great way to kick off the year, and if you have not already, our Parks and Rec has some phenomenal programs that are going on. You can find out about them at the website, a lot of them, you can register through this week, and they start right up, so if any of you want to go out there and get active in the town, now's the time to do it.
And I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. We're on our way, got a lot of things to do here in Florence, we should get some projects completed this year. Hopefully, the North Main Street expansion will be done, hopefully, the Aquatic Center and the library will be done, and no telling what other projects come forward that we will complete. But we have to do it with all the council and the staff working together. I would like to thank the staff for all the work you did last year, expect you to do 110% this year, but we need to continue moving Florence forward, and we started off on a good pace, it's a brand-new year, all working together will accomplish a lot. And remember, we're all one community, from town limits to the north, the town limits to the south, town limits to the east, town limits to the west, we're all Florence, Arizona, and we're going to continue to be that way. Doesn't matter where you live inside the town limits, you're still a Florence resident. With that, need a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second adjourned. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming, we are adjourned.